Can I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Riles.
President.
Commissioner Verba.
Present.
Commissioner Bailey.
Present.
Commissioner Cardoza.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Green.
Present.
Commissioner Bunch.
Good evening.
Commissioner Bartholomew.
Hello.
And Commissioner.
Present.
Can I get approval of the minutes of June 3, 2024?
I move that we approve the minutes of June 4.
I second. June 3.
June 3.
Are there any objections to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? If the minutes pass. Now we'll head into business from the public. Any persons wanting to provide comments? And email comments, written comments to cdaa@albany.org.gov, including your name before noon on the day of the meeting, to comment virtually during the meeting, register by emailing cdaa@albany.org before noon on the day of the meeting with your name, and the chair will call upon those who have registered to speak. If you appear in person at the meeting, you must register to speak. And I believe we have one person for a sign up for a business from the public, and that's Teresa Johnson. This is business from the public, this is not for the public hearing. So did you sign up for the wrong one? Okay, no worries. So you don't want to do anything with no business from the public outside of what's happening on the agenda? Okay, great. Thank you. Hey. So. Next on our agenda is our quasi judicial public hearing regarding an appeal of a staff decision regarding planning file SD-01-24. The applicant is Audrey Eldridge. Have all commission members received a copy of the agenda packet materials and are you familiar with them? So I call to order this quasi judicial public hearing at 5:18 PM. If you wish to testify, there were two options available which were described on the agenda. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? Do any members wish to report a site visit? Do any members wish to abstain from participating in proceedings? Would anyone wish to challenge the planning commission's right to determine this matter or the participation of any commission member in this hearing and decision? If so, please turn on your camera, raise your hand to be called on. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself, state your name so you can be called on. Well, at this time, I call for a reading of the meeting procedures by Conference of Planning Commission Manager Anne Caitlin. Caitlin, sorry.
For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the planning commission and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards. Staff will describe or other criteria in the Conference Planner Development Code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the planning commission may allow continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designated need to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court.
Great, thank you. At this time, I call for the staff report from the project planner Liz Olmstead.
Good evening. Tonight, we're hearing an appeal on planning file SD-0124. It's located at 2949 Gibson Hill Road Northwest for a tentative subdivision of nine lots. So the land use application process, this is a type 1L decision, which is a staff decision. The original notice of decision was issued on May 10, 2024. Sorry, that's wrong up in the slide. The appeal was filed on May 20, 2024. The notice of public hearing was mailed on June 3, 2024, and notice was posted on the site the same day. Today, we received five pieces of written testimony which were submitted to the planning commission. So this site, as I said before, is located on 2949 Gibson Hill Road Northwest, which is on the corner of Sunny Lane and Gibson Hill. The proposal is a tentative subdivision for nine lots. Seven of those lots were townhomes, and two of the remainder lots are for an existing duplex and an existing accessory building. The land division was based on criteria in ADC 11.180. Up on the screen, you'll see the summary of the criteria in which it was reviewed. The first is the proposal meets development standards of the zone and any remaining property. A joint land can be developed or is provided access to allow development. Transportation improvements are available or will be provided with the with the development in accordance with the ADC, and public facilities and utilities are available or will be provided with the development, and development within special purpose districts complies with the applicable regulations. Staff found as proposed and conditioned, the proposed subdivision satisfied all applicable review criteria. So tonight, the appeal issues that were raised for this subdivision were, one, townhouse project density, and two, townhouse land division process. So the townhouse project density is calculated based on the gross area of the townhouse project site. Gross area is calculated before any dedications or deductions of land are made, such as right-of-way dedication. The site also qualified for a bonus provision for reduction in lot size for transportation because they're located within 200 feet of a main road, which is Gibson Hill, which is an arterial. The second is townhouse land division process. The appellant stated that this should have been processed through a middle housing land division, but townhouse lots can actually be created through a standard land division process. They go through more criteria than a middle housing land division. Townhouses are a standalone housing type and also a form of middle housing. So only seven of the nine lots are for townhomes and not eligible for a middle housing land division. These are intended for other middle housing types. Questions?
Big questions from members online, Ted or Bill?
No chair, thank you.
So we'll now be taking public testimony. First, I would like to ask that we limit our testimonies to three minutes as you have quite a few people willing to testify. And if you already heard someone bring forth the same concern you have, I suggest that you just pass unless you have some additional information you'd like to add to the testimonies. That's okay with folks, so we would like to limit it to three minutes. So first, we'll hear from the appellate, and then the applicant of the original land use application, and then we'll hear from those in favor of the appeal, followed those in opposition or with concerns, and finally, anyone who is neutral. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit to the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then email it to cdaa@albany.org.gov. And the written testimony that was submitted by the email has been included in our packet, and we were able to see it today. So we will now be taking excuse me, testimony for those who registered to speak during the meeting. Do we want to hear from the appellate first?
Yes.
That would be?
Mrs. Eldridge.
Mrs. Eldridge, thank you.
I could email it as well. But I would have it here. And I'm going to give a very succinct presentation. So I'm going to omit some of the niceties. My name is Audrey Eldridge, I live at 1705 Northwest Ravenwood. And I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to explain my concerns regarding this development and the inadequate infrastructure, which is something we just learned about. There was an appeal filed on a decision for the adjacent middle housing project to this one due to inadequate infrastructure. Brad Davis will be presenting the transportation infrastructure issue, and I'm going to address the water infrastructure concerns. I refer to that appeal as this development uses the same infrastructure as the River Woods Crossing development. You can refer to the documents I've attached there, but basically, the city's draft water master plan states that the North Albany and Gibson Hill pump stations are near capacity. In fact, the North Albany pump station is currently at capacity and will need to be replaced soon. This appeal was heard by a referee on June 11, 2024, and the referee has not released her decision regarding the infrastructure adequacy. I believe it would not be appropriate to allow another dense development to occur in the same vicinity using the same infrastructure before a decision is rendered. The 2949 North Gibson Hill Road staff report states the city utility map shows an eight-inch public water main in northwest Sunny Lane and 24-inch public water main in northwest Gibson Hill Road. The fact is that there is a water line does not equate to adequate water supply to serve that line via the North Albany pump station. Our rights as current residents include to have the water service we pay for and pay taxes on not be interrupted or degraded when there are solutions. GOLE 11 also provides that large cities shall work to ensure that infrastructure serving underdeveloped or underdeveloped, where middle housing is allowed, is appropriately designed and sized to serve middle housing. Is our contention that the lack of adequate infrastructure, the North Albany pump system, does not allow the city to permit this new development as proposed and to still stay in compliance with GOLE 11. Allowing this development to occur before addressing the critical infrastructure is a violation of substantive provision of the applicable land use regulations. With regards to the water infrastructure, the city can still comply with GOLE 11 by not allowing middle housing development in the affected areas of North Albany to occur until after the North Albany pump capacity has been increased to meet the projected need, where the city can allow the development but not connect the new units to water until the pump system is upgraded. There are probably other resolutions as well, and the criterion of meeting GOLE 11 must be a major factor in that. And I have a few questions in my package I'd like to ask the city, but that's what I have to share.
Thank you very much. Let's go through the list of people registered to speak.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we were going to invite the applicant if they wanted to testify of the original land use application first, which is the typical process that you hear from the applicants and then from the rest of the public. So Mr. Lutman, did you want to testify? Yep.
My name is Scott Lutman. I'm the applicant for this middle housing project, and I support the staff's analysis, and I'm here to answer questions.
Fine.
Thank you very much.
So we will now be hearing from those who are in favor of the appeal, and that was Scott, he just spoke. So and next is Brad Dennis, he is in favor, or was that incorrect? Okay, because I've got two marks here. Righty, well, that was the only person in favor, anyone else in favor? Okay. We will now hear from those who are in opposition. And I will start with Teresa Johnson.
Throw us down, Brad.
Okay, Brad Dennis. Please state your name, address, and spell your last name for the record, please, thank you.
Brad Dennis, my last name is D-E-N-N-I-S. I live at 1212 Northwest Spencer Mountain Drive. I've lived in my property, starting in 1983 when I bought it. I went through the period of time when lack of infrastructure had an absolute prohibition on building in North Albany. That was related to sewer. We have another situation now related to traffic infrastructure, and I will submit a couple of exhibits. One is the city's traffic impact study guidelines, and it absolutely gives the city the right to ask for a traffic study, even if there's less than 50 peak hour trips, and it still may be required, and it gives some criteria for which you would be interested in a traffic study. If there exists any current traffic problems, such as high accident locations, poor roadway alignment, or capacity deficiency that are likely to be compounded as a result of the proposed development. And the third item is if staff anticipates that adjacent neighborhoods or other areas will be adversely impacted by the proposed development. And then the second exhibit that I will email to the council is a document that was prepared at the request of the city of Albany to study the traffic backups on Highway 20 that go into downtown Albany and back up onto North Albany Road as well. I'm not a planner, but I do have an engineering background. My degree is in construction engineering management from OSU. I've worked for a large paving contractor, I understand the construction industry. And again, although I'm not a planner, it doesn't take a person with too much foresight to see the issues that are going to be occurring in North Albany with continued development. Any of these individual projects on their own may not be enough to trip or trigger more severe problems, but a person has to be aware of the other projects that are either in the works or being planned and to consider the whole and not to just, you know, just look at one small little nine-unit subdivision. I mean, you need to be aware of, say, 80 units across the street, the potential for an additional 80 units across the street, the project that was just approved on Jones Avenue down by the railroad tracks. It's hard to say how many units will be in there. You know, a person doesn't have to look too far to see that there's acreage right near the middle school that's at some point going to be developed. So good planning, to me, would indicate that you consider all of these projects and not just look at one individual project. The issue is that the people here-
We're at three minutes.
Pardon me?
I was letting her know that we're at three minutes.
Okay. The people here who are speaking, we're speaking because we live there. The developers do not live typically, do not live in the area where the development's taking place. We've lived here our whole lives, many of us. And so we need to slow down, put, I'd be in favor of a prohibition on building until the city can get with the county and the state to work on an overall master traffic plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Audrey Eldridge. Okay, you guys got this. This, I'm seeing Danny McCaffrey and then Teresa. Good night. Okay, Teresa.
Good evening, I'm Teresa Johnson. I live at 2336 Northwest Woodcrest in North Albany, last name J-O-H-N-S-O-N. Most of what has already been said, so I'm not really going to go over all that. What I am going to add to it is the lack of public transportation. Some of our bus lines have, the service has been decreased in terms of where it goes and everything, and if you're going to be adding all of these new residents, that's something that needs to be addressed is the public transportation system. And in general, I would also say that SDCs that fund these improvements and everything, in my opinion, need to be increased and need to always come before. The developer needs to be responsible for the improvement of infrastructure that's necessary and not the taxpayers. And what I mean by that is not just what's in the immediate development, but what goes in and out of that development as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I got this right. Audrey, you did not wish to speak, and Danny, you did not wish to speak. Okay, great. Barbara Mercer, is that I'm saying it right? Okay, thank you, Barbara. And Peter Weld.
Good evening, my name is Peter Weld, I live at 2610 Dover Avenue in North Albany. My last name is spelled W-E-L-D. Earlier today, I submitted my comments in writing via email to Ms. Olmstead. However, the sent time on the message is 12:01, and she informs me they will not be considered because it was past noon. Much of what I was going to say, pardon me, much of what I said in my email has already been covered by Mr. Dennis, but I will endorse what he said. The traffic on both Gibson Hill Road and North Albany Road is already a concern for residents. It appears that the developers are avoiding the need for a traffic study by limiting the size of the individual projects to ensure that the number of peak hour trips generated by each development would be less than 50. I contend that the proposed developments are in close enough proximity to each other that the total number of dwelling units in the project are considered as a whole is large enough to require a formal traffic impact study before allowing any work to proceed. Since the dramatic increase in peak hour trips generated by the development of 2949 Gibson Hill Road, as well as the development of Riverwood Crossing and the developments on North Albany Road will adversely impact adjacent neighborhoods or other areas in North Albany, a full traffic impact analysis is required by the city's own guidelines. I would like to add to what I wrote. For the city to consider any North Albany development when their own studies have made them aware of the need for repair and/or replacement of the two pumping stations in North Albany that are currently operating at or near capacity shows absolutely no concern for the citizens of North Albany. When the Riverwood Crossing was first announced, I spoke to Mr. Martinow in the planning office about it. He stated there was nothing we can do because of the state's middle housing law. Well, at this point, I have to ask, do you mean can't do or won't do? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now be taking public testimony for those who did not register to speak beforehand. Is there any member of the public interested in speaking tonight on this topic that did not register? Does the appellate have any rebuttal testimony? Does the staff have final comments in response to the testimony that was presented? Does anyone have any procedural questions they would like to raise at this time?
I guess my question is, are we motioning in favor of the appeal or the initial approved application?
I have to discuss it first.
Okay.
I'll have Ann give us some more detail, because this is my first appeal, so I have to apologize for not being as knowledgeable about the appeal process since this is my first, and Ann and Liz will help us through this conversation as we get to those points in-depth discussion. Tyler. So I will declare this public hearing closed at 5:42 PM. Oh. I will now call for deliberation. Does the planning commission wish to discuss the case? Tyler, this is the time.
Yeah, I would like to add, you know, I feel like in addition to growth, we have a responsibility to protect existing citizens here, and some of the things that were mentioned about the water capacity being, you know, at or near full, and that we've already got a referee involved. In addition to potential traffic study, I feel like at minimum, you know, we should wait to hear from the referee before making a decision.
Excuse me. I guess I had a question for city planners if, so it sounds like a traffic study is not required by the rules, correct?
Correct.
All right, and it sounds also like, according to our criteria, this thing has been deemed that it meets all of the criteria.
That's correct. Our transportation analyst evaluated the impacts on the system for both this development and also the other development that has been brought up, the Riverview Crossing, and has found that there would not be an impact to the operations, you know, the classifications of the roads. So there's, there's no, there was not enough impact to warrant any changes to the infrastructure by the developer. They will be building the road and sidewalk, and they're dedicating, they're building a partial road. They're making improvements for this development.
Thank you. So along those lines, I definitely hear the concerns about taking a strategic approach towards a long-term vision of what North Albany goes for. However, this is a quasi judicial issue, this is a hearing. As a planning commission, it's our job to rule based off the facts, and the facts say that we've, that they've met the criteria. The strategic vision and strategic planning, that's the city council's job. And our job is to say, were all the criteria met? Yes. The appeals will say, can bring and say, no, these criteria weren't met. Then we decide, does that affect what the city says? What I'm seeing here is that the concerns raised, they are very valid, and I would definitely have the exact same issues if I was someone who lived in North Albany. if I was someone who lived in North Albany. But that being said, those are, those are issues for the city council, not for the planning commission. So if we were to vote right now, I would vote against the appeal and for the developer in this particular case, simply because all of the criteria have been met. I'm done.
Madam Chair. I've got a couple of questions that I'll see if I could get the answer to. First, do we know if it's true about the water, the, either the supply or the sanitary sewer in North Albany? Do we know that for a fact that it is at capacity? I mean, I don't know. I've heard some speeches and some information supporting that. But do we know, does anybody from the city has made that fact known to us or not? I don't, I don't know.
Well, it is in the staff report for the original land use application. So the water line sizes are adequate to accommodate this development. The systems are already there in the road. And in regards to the water master plan, there's a draft which will be adopted soon by the council. That is determining future needs on the system. But we were assured by city staff and Public Works Department that there are no concerns at this time about the current status of the infrastructure. But they are planning now for the future. And there, there were not issues, and that was evaluated with this development. And I mean, same for the sewer, same for the streets. And those findings are in the staff report that were, the original staff report that was prepared based on with input from Public Works.
Thank you. I've got one other question.
Go ahead, Ron.
Madam Chair. Does anyone know what the ridership was of the bus before it was discontinued? Was this a, was this a, was this a, you know, a resource that was being used? Or was it just, like, we often see empty buses kind of bopping around town? Or was it that, or was it being used? Does anyone know?
Well, I don't have the exact ridership, but at the community conversation and conversations with Public Works, the Public Works Director said that one of the reasons why that route up on Gibson Hill was removed was due to extremely low ridership. And I can't remember what number she said. But it's, as ridership needs increase, the city can evaluate whether to restore a stop there or in other places. One of the other issues is connectivity between scenic and Gibson Hill so that there might be a better flow or a different flow for transportation vehicles and looking at those turning movements. That's what I remember Director Bailey saying at that meeting. But I mean, it's an expense to restore the stop there. But unfortunately, it was removed due to low ridership and balancing costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Online, Ted or Bill, Commissioner Bunch?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Riles?
I'm fine at this point.
Oh, there's a hint. And I just apologize for not recognizing. Is that okay if we take something from the audience at this time?
I think the hearing's closed.
They can make their decision now based on your summary of those comments and determination whether they feel that information is relevant to the decision.
Well, Ann, I was a bit confused. As I said, this is my first time overseeing this appeal process, so I'm not real clear on the procedures. But was there opportunity to keep the, continue the hearing and keep the record open for additional information for the commission to consider?
Yes. I mean, that's something the commission can decide. If there's been a request to continue the hearing and you reopen it and continue it. If you'd like to leave the record open, there, it's a 21-day minimum process where there would be seven days for submission of any new evidence and testimony. That would be a week from today. Then seven days for any party to respond to that information, which would be up to July 1st. And then seven days for the applicant or the appellant to respond to the information, July 8th. And then we would try to schedule basically a continued hearing after that process is over. So we're looking at middle of July, July 15th, I think would be the earliest we could schedule a hearing that captures that 21-day, 777. So it's up to you to decide if you want to do that. If there was a request from the public and I was trying to look at the written testimony received, then there might have been a request to keep the record open. Then you would need to actually grant that request. So I'm trying to scroll through the testimony to see if it was one or the other. But you're welcome to make that decision.
Are we running up against any requirements on, like, day requirements to get through this whole planning? So I like, I'm not opposed to the idea of keeping it open. I just want to make sure that we don't get in trouble for holding up something, because I think we have, what is it, 150 days?
Yeah, it's 120 days.
120 days.
So the applicant did grant us a 30-day extension.
Okay, so we have 150. Correct.
How much of that is left? We may need to get another extension.
Like I said, I'm not opposed to keeping it open. I just want to make sure that we're, we're within that time, that state required time limit, you know, plus any extensions we get.
Likely will have to ask for another extension. The applicant will have to grant us another extension. So I'm not sure if you had time to review the staff report findings from the initial decision. So all that information is in the record, the complete record. And you did receive some testimony tonight and additional submittals. So it's just up to you to determine whether or not you want to consider a continuation or leaving the record open.
I would be in favor of that.
In favor of? Well, I'm just here, we're still discussing right now. Okay? So if there's any other discussion about the process, then we can reopen. So anyone else-
Riles has something.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, thank, um, I'm not opposed to leaving it open, but I haven't heard any reason or finding in fact why we should leave it open. I mean, I really, I understand that, you know, North Albany is eventually running out of room and that there's an infrastructure here and development is ongoing. And it seems to me that it fits all the criteria, and it's been done very well. And maybe at some point in the future, we'll have a real issue with development, and maybe this is a little premature to call that. I'm not in favor of just keeping hearings open for no reason. I feel like there has to be some finding in fact or justification for keeping the hearing open.
Thanks, Commissioner Riles.
That's a completely- The referee's decision on the other case, I think, is due June, July 1st or somewhere around July 1st. And it is based on a different application.
Yeah, it's basically outside the jurisdiction of this decision.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear.
What was that?
So the water line, the water service-
I'm going to ask the commission members to please have one at a time and to be acknowledged by the chair.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So the water service, the line that is available right in the street is sized enough for both fire flow and for domestic residential water. Right. And the water, currently, there is enough capacity in our current water system, the, to accommodate the growth that is happening. There is a new master plan for water and also transportation. The water master plan is close to being adopted, and that's when you plan for improvements that are needed to accommodate the next 20 years' worth of growth. The transportation systems plan is that planning that Commissioner Larson talked about. That will be launching, you know, very soon. And it, it is the system-wide approach to looking at all of the needs, streets, buses, trails, bike lanes, all of that.
So the referee's decision, it will not impact this development?
Correct.
And so what was brought before the planning commission to make a decision? Liz, will you please take a moment to reiterate those points of what we were brought here tonight to discuss?
So, oh. Or should I go on?
Talking about where the water comes from. That needs to be-
So this, we've already closed the public hearing.
Yeah. You're not talking about three issues here.
The staff determines whether the whole system has capacity, and then they also look at the size of the line that is in the street. So they did both of those things and determined that this development would not impact the capacity of the system to serve all of North Albany.
So tonight, the information that was submitted in the appeal was regarding townhouse density and whether or not this should have been a middle housing land division. There was not any information about infrastructure in the actual appeal that we were able to address in the staff report addendum.
So as the process that we are taking forth tonight is looking at those appeal requests, and we can't go beyond that. Our job is to address the appeals?
You can determine the scope of your review. We, it's a little bit, the way it's written in the code, you get to determine that. But I mean, we usually focus on what the appeal is based on. That is typical, that the review is limited to that. However, I mean, it's up to you to determine what you, your scope is.
Go ahead.
I'd hate to set the precedent, unless it's already been set, of us going beyond the scope of a particular appeal. That sends a message to future developers coming here that we may not be playing by rules that they can understand. But I'd rather just stick to the appeal.
It's an appeal.
Excuse me, I believe we might be losing sound on this end.
So the appeal, the process for the appeal is a public hearing. And essentially, that is what the appeal is. You're requesting a public hearing on the matter and asking the planning commission to be the decision maker and determine whether or not staff's decision was accurate. And that's what planning commission's job is. And there are motions on the table, options for you to consider. I, sorry, I don't have that page right in front of me, but there are four options for you to consider in appeal. You can affirm staff's decision, remand it back to staff, reverse it, or modify it in whole or in part. That is what the process is.
Well, do I hear a motion?
I move to affirm the community. I recommend the planning commission choose option one, affirm community development director approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Online. Commissioner Riles, do you have, your mic is off. I was just curious if you had any other comments. Okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstent? What a motion carries. All right, back to the agenda. Is there any business from the commission? Staff updates.
I don't have anything for you this evening. Sorry.
Well, the next meeting date is July 15th, 2024. Again, I'll be out of town. Mr. Bartholomew will be chairing this meeting. And the meeting is adjourned at 6:02. Thank you.